To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the meeting in order?
Mary?
So.
Earl?
Here.
Jerry?
Here.
Rhonda?
Here.
Mary?
Scott?
Here.
Approval of the agenda? I'll take the motion.
Prior to approval, I would like to add a brief update on the road and streets and some great issues. Put it after six to four seven.
That adjustment. Remove the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the evidence to it. I agree with you. I second that motion.
Motion has been made. To approve the agenda. Amen. All those in favor?
Aye.
You want things? Can we make a motion to?
Make a motion to approve for Christina Smith as the bill deposition as council member. Need to know the term and all that.
No.
Basically fulfill when is term? I second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Christine Smith has been seconded.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're assuming you're still accepting.
I'm turning.
Next thing.
And I don't have the oath. I didn't get that release. So I can go look and see double check, but I haven't gotten it yet. That's where you walk.
Want me to try?
Sure.
Remove my orange top.
Yes.
Well, we can do that. We come back to it.
No signal in here.
Yeah. I'm gonna make some appointment to council members. Jerry? And I want to. Scott's. Streets and alleys. Rhonda's. Parks and pool.
Parks and what?
Pool.
Pool.
Let's go. Christina is going to be our representative for our station. Is that okay?
Yes.
More. It's more. Well, Mary's gonna have a couple of jobs. We just.
I would like to add to the parks and pool that Rhonda has the authority to make changes and her word. If she says something to be done, she's supervising the pool operation. It doesn't have to go back to her or unless it's some major change. She needs to be given the authority to run that operation.
She has that.
Make a motion for that since that's your duty. You'll have to. Rhonda.
I'm fine with that.
Give that most part.
I think there's better combined effort, but I'm not gonna sit here and argue. Because without him, I couldn't have done. I know nothing about the chemicals and the pumps and.
You're right.
You're keeping it going, so that is fine.
Like make a motion and Rhonda Clatt as basically pool supervisor for operations. I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Rhonda Clatt.
Whatever you wanna call me.
Rhonda Clatt.
Yeah. That works.
I'm sorry. Anyway, so. So Rhonda Handy will be.
We've got a lot of, I know Morgan's visiting with us. Our city about what we need to do with like the resale tax and she's gotta email and get them on that. Also, just the basics of reselling.
We gotta approve that. Is that normally the follow up or? Yeah. We have to approve it.
Okay, so. Motion has been made and seconded to approve. Rhonda Handy to be supervisor in charge of the pool. All those in favor?
Aye. Yeah, we have to do that twice. We have to approve those appointments.
So Jerry is going to be the president of the council and in charge of finance.
I make a motion for that to be president and finance.
Will I have a second?
Need some help?
Motion has been. For president and finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Scott will be in charge of streets and alleys.
I make a motion for Scott to be overseer of the streets and alleys in the city of Canton, Kansas.
Motion has been made and seconded to appoint Scott as the man in charge of streets and alleys. All those in favor? Rhonda Handy has been selected for. The.
I hear Christine. We just did.
Uh-huh, Christine. Christine is going to be looking at. The. Intercondition, shall I say, or representative to the fire department.
Fire board.
Fire board, yes. I guess she also just wanted to be involved with the codes and business. I'm sorry.
I have a question. Is there a reason we only do fire and not EMS or police? Okay, so can we call it first response?
Yes.
Or public?
The thing about having the fire board appointment is we are required to have it.
Okay.
That has to be specifically mentioned.
Okay. I was just curious because, I mean, they function together most of the time.
They do, but we have to say fire board because we have to have a member on the board.
Okay. I just wasn't sure how that worked.
So what are we gonna?
So can you replay that description of what I'm doing? Sorry.
Fire, EMS, fire board.
Representative of the city council.
Okay.
On the fire board EMS. Because they all meet together anyway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Did somebody motion? I just make it turn into this.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to assign a position on the fire board and first responder slash EMS to Christina Smith.
The motion has been made and seconded to recognize Christine Smith as a representative of the city of Galveston, Kansas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mary?
One.
You got to take a check.
I need to have it lined in.
All the codes? Codes?
Mary, in the conversation you and I had the other day, we know there's a problem in Jackson County. A lot of people complaining about it. Would you be willing to step up and take on that project if we could find some funds and make that happen?
But here's my deal. I just don't want to be thrown that project and not be involved in everything.
No, I understand. Okay. But where I'm at is you've got some connections. You know some people. You can find out the best way to do it. And we came up with dollars and cents. So if we were to allocate some money to start this process, we can start going forward. Getting it, making it.
Yes.
Saxon had tried that some quite a while back, something a few years ago. I don't know what all that transpired or whatever.
Well, it's gonna be a process. You know, but I just don't want that out to me and then, okay, that's all we want you to do. You know what I'm saying? Oh, I know. Because you know. And then people are gonna have to understand if we have to come on their property and things like that, that we don't need no backlash on it because, you know, if you wanna complain about, and then we need to make people, owners accountable for their cats. I mean, what's the difference between dogs and cats having tags or if you have a cat or what? You know what I'm saying? I know it's hard for cats and dogs, but what's the difference? You know what I'm saying? That's how I feel about that because it is animal abuse. I mean, it really is.
I just got a bunch of information today from other cities through the list about the cat registration. So if you wanna come, I could look what there is in printed out.
But the thing is, we, I got a lot of people say, take these cats and put them elsewhere. You don't. This is the area they know.
That's one of the reasons after our conversation. Yeah, I thought you'd be perfect for that because you'll do the right thing.
I mean, I've got three kittens downstairs in a spare bedroom right now because they ended up at my house after the flooding waters and now I don't have the heart to give them away. Casey looked at me and said, we are not having five cats in our house, but I still have them. So, yeah, I didn't believe it, but like I said, I just need to make sure I get the vacuum I need for it and we can have the money because I've talked to Joe Shear, plus I've talked to the McPherson Humane Society because I had to go in and take a cat there that we had found in McPherson area. So we took it over there and she would be more than happy to sit down and plus she gave me two big bags of cat food to distribute out to the cats here again because they're always have extra food. And I do feed them, so everybody should know that. So I do feed them and I get cop feeding now.
My whole like, if you don't like, Mary doesn't feed the cats, then you don't drive around town.
You know, Brian lets me feed his and then Terry Paul lets me feed across the street and there's now, so.
I know you'll try to rehome them if possible.
Oh, if I can, if I can find places, but like, you know, I know a lot of people will go, just take them out to a farm and dump them. Well, we might as well just invite the coyotes in town and just have a feast with them. You know, that's the way I would get it. But I do know there's a number of them and I'm sure Terry Paul probably feeds them because he feeds a lot out of his shop that are coming from that regear house that needs to be tore down. I'm sure that's where a lot of them refuge at. So, and I know that's a big eyesore and I know the house is home again.
Refugeing at Truman Tings too.
Yeah, so, yeah, in the basement. We've seen them go in there and, which is not their fault, Mary Jane feeds them too, but also we need to be mindful that when we take these cats in, as I talked to Joe Shear the other day after I took my kittens in, and she said that when we catch them, we have to catch a certain amount, a number of them and then we take them in and they have to be fixed and we have to get them out of there as fast as we put them in there because they can't have them in there for very long because of the things that could work. And if she says, and I said, well, there's things wrong with them, then would you just go ahead and just put them down? Because if there's no, and she said yes, so, which will cost a little money too, but at the same time, I'd rather be more humane about it than.
Can we work a quantity deal with her if we're starting to do so?
She said she would do it at her cost. Her cost only. She's not making any money, but if we could, in my opinion, if we could find her plus finding a person that would do the same thing, then we've got two places to do things for and I think that would be a lot feasible.
Can't we find out, I mean, we're talking about Spain here. You certainly want to get them shots for rabies or stuff like that or anything?
Well, yeah, yeah.
I mean, because we have. How much are costs and all that? Find out, check with a couple of.
Okay, okay. See if they can get a real deal or whatever.
Talk to Saxon a little bit. I'm gonna get that some research on this and I don't know. I will talk to him and find out.
I'm just being honest. I think.
I know you can.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah. So the question was.
Yes, yes.
Okay, make a point. Code enforcement. And animal control.
Okay. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion for Mary Jowers for codes and nuisance.
And animal control?
Animal control.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded to appoint Mary Jowers to code nuisance and animal control. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, we need to sum with this. As most of you, I'm sure, know, we have hired an assistant city clerk and Mrs. Barnett is selecting individual. And I just wanna make sure everybody knows that and we need to agree upon that issue. What was your rate?
What's that? Sorry.
What was your wages?
Eighteen.
Eighteen dollars an hour. Do I hear a motion to?
Does anybody know what we were paying Jessica?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
And for how many hours?
Typically, it'll be somewhere around twenty-five to thirty. Can't go over thirty-two.
That'd be a permanent part-time position.
Yeah, it's permanent part-time position.
Yes.
Believe it or not, you need somebody. Down about in my mind. Okay.
I need to go through and approve the wage adjustments. Was the position and the wager? The position was permanent. The wage rate was based on the experience level who was hired. Right. So we need to approve the dollar? So I make a motion to formalize the hiring of Erin Barnett at a wage of eighteen dollars an hour for a permanent part-time position in the clerk's office. I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Erin Barnett as the city clerk's position part-time at eighteen dollars an hour. All those in favor?
Aye.
While we're here, we're gonna discuss this fireworks. Make sure that everybody's on board and we get it approved.
Okay.
The. I believe in the sales of fireworks. Does that start on? The last day of July or the first day of, I mean, last day of June.
I'd have to look. It's actually says in the city council.
Yeah, I know it's the end of June. I'm not sure exactly what date it's gonna be on. I just buy it. I wanna say it's the twenty-seventh, twenty-seventh to twenty.
I don't know.
Per the county regulations, I believe they can't sell until, I think the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth is what I'm thinking.
I know Jay can have a lead because he's in the junior class. They have mandatory lead on the twenty-seventh, so it can be before that. Because usually they have that mandatory junior class lead prior to, so.
I just wanna make sure because we'll have to prove.
There was somebody else that contacted Morgan about one of the block on the Fort Prairie. They were supposed to contact one of us. Did anybody get contacted? No, I never did.
I like to reinforce, ma'am. I never heard that.
Yeah, whoever it is, at least be playing ahead instead of like for the last minute.
We're getting to this guy.
Yeah, a couple of us were late.
Mary was late.
My parents might be on. We thought we had mentioned he wanted four days.
But I'll be good now. Now I know that you're ready to ask.
The standard of the city.
Probably stuff.
Does that first through the board standardly? And then if they've ever wanted it changed, then they have to request that specifically from the city council.
Why would you differ that selling if they're outside?
It's not the selling. It's the discharge fireworks. Because that's been an issue. As soon as you cite your standards for the city, they do post those out there. I know that because they start selling usually before it's allowed in town, right?
Yeah, they do tomorrow.
So then, you know, your cop has to run around telling people they can't. Most people think if you can buy them, you can shoot them off and that's not the case everywhere. So.
I said something about the second, third, fourth.
Yeah, I think he did.
I thought he said the first. He said the first F, if I remember correctly, but.
Sale?
Firing. But the fourth does fall on a Thursday this year, so letting people have an extra day on a Friday may be helpful. I, I'm honestly, I think they're gonna do it anyway, so.
Let's make it legal.
If we make it legal, you know what I mean? Whereas Monday is a weekday and most people are gonna have to work the next day. Trade one for the other if you find our ordinance and it is.
So for this, it says discharge of fireworks in the city is eight AM until eleven PM, July third through July fifth.
Through the sixth.
Five, fifth. It says in the city, which doesn't apply to their state, the sale of fireworks is between eight AM and eleven PM, June twenty-seventh through July fourth. So the sale of fireworks and the discharge of fireworks is different.
But if they're across the street, they're not even in.
Right, right. Like I said, it doesn't apply to their state, though. We do have an ordinance for the city.
Recognize what? What they started to be.
Discharge of fireworks is between eight AM and eleven PM, the third, the fourth, and the fifth.
What do they do in Galveston? I think it's back to the. I read it.
You can do the first through the fifth, but then the first, second, and third, you could like end it at nine. Like just change the times.
Like just change the times, people with fire moms, just, you know, it's more dark at night.
No, it's, it's not dark by night.
The only problem with that, night is not even dark yet.
Well, ten o'clock. I like my is closed by the thirty.
The fifth is the day after, so hopefully we don't discharge after, we celebrate.
But in this specific year, Fourth of July is on a Thursday, so I, I don't know, will people be more apt to do a celebration on Friday, we can spend half the weekend. A lot of people still work on Friday.
What we need to do is come up with something standardized, this doesn't have to go through every year to figure this crap out. Because I know previously when we had the parties, I'd come up and ask about it and try to, I mean, it'd be very easy to standardize it, I mean, if we come up with a policy that Fourth of July falls on a Monday, we could allow this number, X number of days prior to the fourth, and this number of days after to cover everything, because I'd have to go through all this every day.
I talked to Bart Pickle about the fireworks, he's gonna be selling them out there. He said they could start selling them on the twenty-seventh, but you can't shoot them in town till the first.
That's what I had thought.
That's what I think, but you just wrote the third through the fifth?
Yeah, our code actually says discharge in the city is the third through the fifth.
Third through the fifth?
Yeah.
I just think somebody ever still here comes up here and asks where it to be.
That's what I'm saying, if you standardize it, it'll be spent twenty minutes trying to figure this out every year. I mean, if we're all still here next year, or whoever down the road, this kind of stuff needs to be standardized.
I think you do the second through the fifth. Oh, I think that's fair.
Yeah, I think. It'd be those ones, they have a problem on the first, but it's like.
I think four days is fine.
And the day after allows people, like, if you had some extras, especially since it falls on a Friday, you can take the kids out and, you know, the backyard and shoot them off. Gives you an extra day.
So we go for what, second through the fifth?
Two days preceding and one day after the holiday.
There you go.
Say that again.
Two days preceding and one day after the holiday. Then it doesn't matter what day it is.
Yeah, I mean, on that specific code, and there are several other codes in that codebook that need to be rewritten.
So are we gonna make a motion to rewrite that code?
Yep.
Do you have that code?
I do, so. Scroll, sorry. Uh, discharge is seven dash three zero three. And it's under Article Three.
So it would be a motion to amend. Seven dash three zero three.
No, the sale is regarding discharge of fireworks.
Yeah, I don't like when we, we don't need to touch.
Okay. I said, and the sales are in the county. We really have to look back.
Right, right. Dan was asking specifically about the discharge.
Yeah.
So discharge.
Would be the second, third.
So we're going to amend, uh,
Article Three.
Article Three, uh, section seven dash zero three. Amend the statute on discharge of fireworks to read two days prior to the holiday, and one day after. It's illegal for discharge of fireworks. I'm making a motion to that amendment.
I will second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve discharge of fireworks for Fourth of July on July second, third, fourth, and fifth. All those in favor?
Just a second, just a second.
Sorry, hold on. I, I wanted to make sure I had the right numbers.
Two days before and one day after.
No, no, for the ordinance.
The correct, I'm gonna make sure I have the correct ordinance number.
Seven.
Article Three, section seven oh three, the ordinance number is actually. Ordinance three, that's, uh, we'll be fine, leave it like that, that is, that's for action from the show. So go, go ahead and read your, recite your motion.
Well, it's already been made and seconded. So I'm just saying, approval for discharge of fireworks for Fourth of July two days before the holiday and one day after. All those in favor?
Aye. Hey, can we go back to the clerk real quick?
Sure.
I mean, we're, we're gonna make this a permanent part-time position, do we want to give her any benefits, like vacation or anything like that? Because right now, I mean, if, if Erin is gone, Morgan's gonna get behind, or if Morgan is gone, Erin's gonna have to be there by herself. Or if we didn't have Erin's position, how you're saying? I mean, if we're gonna be back, we'd be back in the same boat as if, like.
I think that's realistic.
No, we'll kind of, we'll kind of talk about that at the next council meeting, get something figured out. I don't know what we can legally do with part-time position and vacation, I don't know.
We also need to look at capers specifically.
What, what do they require?
Her number of hours and see if there's a minimum, maximum part-time.
Well, I do know I work for the school and I'm not full-time, and I know I still get capers taken out.
You do?
Yeah, and then, I would research it and it's. Yeah, you, you do get it, yeah.
And she has, maybe all the capers?
Yeah, mine's not as much around me. Right, right, but she still gets it, she still gets it, because I get it.
Okay.
And, and there'll be times that maybe I'll get forty, but maybe I'm off, so it just depends on when I drive and stuff, so I do know I can get it.
So part-time is eligible?
Yes, it is eligible for capers, yep.
All right.
Yep, I do know that.
Yeah, so everybody kind of think about it, the next council meeting, we'll go through and come up with something for vacation. Kind of look what we have with our current, for current employees, and kind of make something of an alteration onto there.
That's fine. Let's move on.
Okay, sorry about that, I just talked about that. Do I run?
We're running way behind.
I know, I'm sorry, Scott.
My fault.
No, it's not, Mary.
I said in the first school board meeting, for two and a half hours before I gave the order of course, and they got to that point, I go, I think we're just gonna have to come next meeting.
Oh, my gosh.
So you can, it's not gonna matter.
There's no, I already said I'm gonna talk anyway, with or without you. You know, with or without you.
Next item on the agenda is, uh, I wanted you to do an update about the roads. I have had numerous conversations with Sean Wilson. The direction we're gonna kind of look at going is continuing with the drainage issue at the end of Railroad on First Street, and opening that up a little bit, and he's looking into the equipment to re-run the asphalt on Second Street and lay it back down as a road material. Rather than having the cost of bringing new material in, that will give us a solid temporary road surface. I've seen it in Inment, holds up very well. So that's the direction we're going, he's going to try to make it to the next meeting.
You said Sean Wilson?
Yeah, that's Wilson, Wilson Dervis.
Had, once you told me, somebody was telling me that Mount Ridge had a lot of this equipment already. A lot, they didn't know how to run this stuff, I don't know if there's any truth to that, I never did look into it, yeah.
That is possible. I, my conversations have been brief with Sean because he's tied up in all kinds of other stuff, but that's the direction we're going. Okay. So, we're making headway.
Pool discussion.
Pool discussion, uh, in your folder you'll find the proposed hours of operation and staffing schedule for the pool. It's something to look at. It is based on the research that I've done with, on other places, research that Stephen has done. Monday through Thursday, operation one to seven, no shutdown at five o'clock. Friday, one to eight, and on Friday at five o'clock, an additional lifeguard comes on, hoping that we have seen an increase in the number of people there Friday evening. Friday would, and Saturday would be one to eight o'clock, Sunday, two to seven. Staffing levels, Monday through supervisor, one lifeguard, oh, excuse me, one supervisor, two lifeguards. That more than satisfies the state requirements. Friday, you would have one supervisor, two lifeguards, one additional lifeguard from five to eight. Saturday and Sunday, presuming that we would have a bigger crowd, one supervisor, three lifeguards. All personnel will perform lifeguard duties, that includes the supervisor. All positions on a twenty-minute rotation with a break every two hours. These are the bare minimum for operating that pool. The minimum temps for opening the pool, seventy-degree outside air temp, seventy-five degree water temp. And the reason I put on there is they are reversed on our head school site. Okay? So I am submitting this for discussion and rebuttal, so that's what I've done.
How have the night swims been so far? We had one, two of them?
I think the one during the rodeo was excellent.
They would have loved to have seen more hours, and we could open it Friday night too, if we were in fact.
But the phone one, the one for adults only was not.
No. Yeah, we took it by there, but.
How much, how much advance notice do you think people had, had for it before we put it in? I didn't.
I thought it was pretty well, I thought it promoted it.
Well, on the adult swim, the only place it was posted was on the Canton, or on the, uh, excuse me, on the head school website. It should have been on the city, on the Facebook city site, I mean, we should have got it out. In talking with the liquor store, uh, they have a billboard, we can post up there, I'm sure there's other businesses we can post up.
Yeah, Linda would, Linda would make flyers and post it, like one on the building right before he walked in the door.
There you go.
Post office and stuff, so she knows to be good about that.
It's been a struggle, it's, it, it just, in general, to get the word out, like anything, get down.
Well, we need to be posting it at Calva, at Hillsborough, I mean.
I'm with you.
I will say too that, yes, other people do have access to post on the city Facebook page, like the maintenance department, but I would like to know either if somebody does post or if somebody wants to post, because a lot of times people see a post on Facebook and they call the office with questions, and I have to say, what post on Facebook, because I'm busy doing everything else. I didn't know anybody posted, so if people would contact me, I could post for them or share. If they post, that's fine, I just would like information.
That's one of the reasons that I kind of put this together, uh, I've been thinking a lot about it, I've talked with Rhonda and Barry, I've talked with a lot of people about it. Lot of different input, some people love it, some people hate it, but the thing is, we need to get something that's a set schedule, stick to it. If we have a bad day or night, we do, but we were open, the hours that we said were gonna be open.
The only issue is staffing, because these kids do have, I mean, Mary knows this.
I know.
Right, right now, the, right now the staffing levels, they're overstaffed on a, on a regular basis.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, to stay open, extended hours, I don't know if these kids are involved in church projects.
They are, I'm telling you guys, starting, starting there pretty soon, you got athletes that play, and I'm telling you, it's gonna get crazy. It's gonna get crazy.
The thing is.
That's the problem. And you can't, in my opinion, you can't just sit there and say, well, if you can't work this, then you're not gonna work there. That ain't fair to them, because they're kids, they play sports, those are the kind of people you want up there. Those are the kind of, you want them athletic, you want them to where they, you don't sit there and give them a, uh, a thing, you either can't do it or don't do it, to me, that's not fair. You know, you're not, you're not trying to work with your staff, and that, that really bothers me, because I'm all about the kids. I'm sorry, I'm all about the kids.
I want to try to build a team with us too.
They, they, exactly.
We pay for this, and I'd like to get at least two years out of it.
You know, exactly, exactly, we don't.
I mean, we, we need to work with them.
But they need to work with us as well.
Well, I agree.
Well, but they're kids, they're kids.
They're young adults that are learning, they're young adults that are learning life skills.
It's a summer job, it's a summer job, Miss Scott, you've got to take that in consideration, it's a summer job.
Here's what I would say, I mean, I agree, I would, with the kids and this and that. Talk, talk to Mimi and find out how many of them have the activities, instead of just assuming that all of them do, which I would just imagine quite a few.
Oh, I'd say quite a few.
I've been pushing her to stay open and she definitely said on the weekends she can.
But they'll be having football camps, they'll be having volleyball, that we, you know, this is stuff that's already, you guys know, this is stuff that's been already in motion when school was in process.
That's what I'm saying, if we want to make these changes, then just let Mimi find out from them how many people are available.
And I'll, I'll share this with her.
And I can also get a schedule of when camps are, when they're gonna start, like, doing, like, when they're gonna start having to go to football practices, volleyball practices, I can get all that from a comp. Every last bit of it, but you can't just sit there and tell the kids, well, you can't, then you're, then you're, forget, you can't do that.
Don't want to deter from doing any of the camps, and that would just, you get to Mimi to sit down, go through each one of the lifeguards, what are your gonna be, what are your hour, your hours of availability from today till when school starts? Set and done.
But then they later.
Then we can set, they can set the schedule based off of that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, at that, don't you have two employees that aren't in school and don't, like, they're out of.
Right, that's what I'm saying, go through.
Right, but they still have college.
Yeah, go through with all of them, just if it doesn't matter college or high school, just get, okay, I'm available Monday through Thursday from all day long.
Well, see, that's what I would do, I would tell them to write down what's going on, I'd tell them all to write down what's going on. I had a calendar that I would fill out for when so-and-so couldn't be here, all the ones that couldn't be here, and then I had my calendar for, all right, let's figure out the schedule. Sometimes I didn't figure it out right, but you know, you do what you gotta do to make.
That's where.
Here's, here's the thing, this is the business, this isn't playground for kids.
Right, yeah, I know that.
And, and, and it's for the, for the people of the town. Now, here's my argument against this, is it cost us twenty thousand dollars last year to operate that pool. We brought in three thousand eight hundred dollars shouldn't get them, okay? So actual cost was about sixteen thousand dollars to operate that pool. When I look at Solomon, they made seventeen thousand dollars through the gate last year to run that pool. They're, they only have three hundred more people than we have. They're not in a fluent suburb of some large city. They're middle of the road, they're people just like we are.
The pool is a lot.
It's a lot nicer than.
Yes, it is.
Because I did buy it.
They just put forty-four thousand dollars.
Every time I go to a town, I drive to their pool to see what they got, so, yeah.
Yeah, let's get back to this.
Yeah, let's.
I will share this with Mimi.
Share with Mimi for right now.
We all get that stuff from El Conder and.
Yeah, and for, for, as late as we, as late as we started on the pool, I think it has gone very well. I mean, this kind, this is the kind of stuff that we should have had ironed out ahead of time.
Yeah, especially with the Morgans with all the papers.
I think next year, Jason Klingsdale and I were talking today, and he says the town of, oh, anyway, there's, Madison does the same thing. They go and ask the area businesses and individuals to sponsor a day. You know, eighty bucks, whatever you, I mean, that honestly is gonna bring in more.
Well, I've had, I've had the state bank pay for several days out of the summer, lots and lots of times. Especially when he dropped off Big Gun, or his little.
We'll put out a calendar out there next year and see how full we can get it.
But there again, it is a city pool, and don't expect to make big bucks out of it. I don't, you know, it's not gonna make no money, it's there for the kids.
It's gonna cost us every year to operate it.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, just get, right now, what I would say is just get the hours of operation kind of figured out based on the current life, our current staffing that we have. We want to increase it along with what this right here.
Okay, that's it then.
Water certification requirements?
Yeah, it, what is, what's the status as far as Nick going to take the, this, this water certification test?
My understanding was that, uh, last week, the twentieth, twenty-first, Thursday, Friday, twenty. last week, the twentieth, twenty-first, uh, Thursday, Friday, twenty?
Thursday and Friday, yeah.
He should have been taking a pre-test on Thursday and a final on Friday.
Right.
That's the fir- third test he's missed.
And there's one coming up in August.
And I believe it's the last one for the year.
Yeah, and if he doesn't take that test, part of his job description is that he carries that certification.